The City Council to order. And if we could join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with whose majesty the government is.
We can have our roll call, please.
Mayor Weiss.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Feller.
Here.
Councilmember Keim.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
That will go to item one, which is a 2020 to 21 general fund budget overview.
You wiped it down already, right?
I did.
Okay.
I didn't even touch it.
Okay. So, good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. Today is our annual budget workshop. This year's process was quite different from prior years since we had all this last-minute impacts on our budget and a complete reworking of things in the last 30 days. So, to start with, just the overview, we have revised the budget to address COVID-19 impacts to revenue and expenditures. The proposed general fund budget uses our fiscal year 1920 as a base with a 10% reduction in maintenance and operations. It does not include any Measure X funds. It does its best to maintain service levels and continues our cost containment efforts. Staff does feel like that this is a prudent budget, given the current situation. We do meet all of our reserve requirements, such as healthy cities, economic stabilization, and we continue to reflect the council's strategic priorities as provided in prior workshops and direction. And so, this is the workshop, the draft budget. Final budget adoption would be scheduled for June 3. As noted, the budget's conservative. It focuses on maintaining services to the community and containing employee costs. It will not use any reserves or one-time money to cover operating costs, and it limits new CalPERS-able positions. And so, a summary here, back in January, we projected we would have about $167 million in revenue. That has been adjusted downward by 8.65 million, so our revised revenue budget is $158,270,000. Expenditures were also reduced in order to be within the projected revenue number, just under $8 million in reductions. Our budget in January forecast a surplus of $1.31 million, and that has been reduced down to $610,000 based on these revised numbers. The five-year general fund forecast, including the current number for next year, includes an average of $1.84 million per year in net new CalPERS increases for next year through 2024. And the total CalPERS costs in the general fund for fiscal 2021 is $25 million, increasing to $32.6 million by fiscal year 2425. Those are based on the current actuarial reports and information from CalPERS. Any investment losses that CalPERS is experiencing currently will not hit our rates for two to three years. And we do have $11 million in our CalPERS set aside within the general fund reserves, as well as $10.3 million in our Section 115 trust, which is specifically set aside for CalPERS costs in future years. The budget takes a multi-pronged approach to cost containment, including a freeze on recruitment and replacement hiring. All positions will have to be approved by me before we can fill them, looking to only fill critical essential positions, and looking at it at two points in the process. When the position is first requested, and if it is allowed to proceed through a recruitment process, a second look before we make a hiring offer to see what conditions have changed and ensure that we are still needing that position and can afford it within our budget. There's also a freeze on employee travel for conference and training. I will need to personally approve any expenses in that regard. We have reduced maintenance and operation budgets by 10%, and we continue to look at contracting opportunities in lieu of permanent positions where feasible. We are following City Council policies 2011 and 2013 that assist in paying down the CalPERS obligation, and we are still funding those in the budget. We will continue to manage the Section 115 trust to create greater investment flexibility. We are still in a very conservative investment allocation, which helped protect us with the recent investment situation. But as the economy bottoms out and begins to improve, we could step up into a slightly higher category, still very conservative, in order to try to capture future gains at the right time, based on expert advice. And then, we will continue to research efficiencies and evaluate service delivery. I think that's just the mantra for every department head as part of being part of Oceanside staff. And so, the direction was a rollover expenditures for fiscal year 2021 with a 10% reduction in maintenance and operations. As I mentioned, projected revenues of $158.27 million, projected expenditures of $157.66. That includes a $2.31 million reduction in maintenance and operation with a projected surplus of $610,000. And for a little bit more detail on our primary revenue streams, property tax, and we have consulted with our fiscal consultant on an ongoing basis to really evaluate numbers and how things are being impacted by COVID. We have approximately 4.8% increase in property tax. Property tax is one of those lagging items that sales activity and new construction that happened several years ago is just now hitting the books and the revenue's starting to flow. And so, if there are reductions in property tax due to COVID, it will be out two or three years before we see an impact there. Sales tax has been reduced down by 8%. This is based on the current impacts of COVID and projected changes in consumer behavior for next year. And our transient occupancy tax, we have reduced down by almost 30% for next year, based on the anticipated slowdown in travel and the economic situation. Overall, though, Oceanside sales tax and transient occupancy tax is 20% of our budget, so the reductions in those areas are not as significant as in cities that have a much higher percentage of sales tax or TOT going into their budgets. We have compared our budget to other cities, and the cuts that we're seeing are generally in line with the kinds of cuts that other cities are receiving from their respective consultants and experts, city staff. So, the proposed expenditures are $157.66 million. As noted, the budget's based on the current year budget with reductions in maintenance and operation. It includes $4.3 million in salary savings from funded vacant positions, and so that's part of the hiring freeze that I addressed. We went and looked, and in the past three years, we've averaged about $4.5 million annually in savings in that regard, so we do feel the $4.3 million will be very achievable. It does include all negotiated and known personnel and benefit increases, including PERS. There is a small placeholder for MOUs and comp plans in negotiation or that will be in negotiation during the next fiscal year, and it does fully fund all of our reserve requirements. And so, items that have been directed by council in prior years are included in this year's budget. There's a summary list in your packets, as well as on the screen. Includes opening Marshall Street Pool for summer. Of course, that is contingent upon the county relaxing requirements and our ability to do that. Likewise, with the fireworks, we are including funding in the budget, but whether or not that can proceed is unknown at this time. We are funding ongoing fire apparatus replacement, deferred building maintenance. We are continuing to fund our Project Reach at Libby Lake and North County Lifeline Crown Heights, Project Reach Eastside, and North County Lifeline Lock Casita. Those are after-school programs for disadvantaged youth, and they will continue to be funded. Those are on a reimbursement basis, so as activities are provided, given changes in COVID and how programs can be delivered, they can be adjusted. But this would be the maximum amount we could spend in those categories. Additional items that are in the budget include additional code enforcement and police department funding for encampment details. That's an ongoing item we've budgeted for several years. It includes police overtime to do enhanced downtown and homeless outreach. It continues to fund art commission with a rollover of available funding in those two categories. And so, when we started our budget process, departments submitted their wish list of funding requests, which was well over $4 million. Given the recent changes we went through and scrutinized only those that were absolutely essential, and those include a total of $315,000 that would be added into the budget. $28,000 in one-time expenses and about $286,000 in ongoing costs. And the next few slides just go through the list of what those are. The one-time costs are for the police and fire department, technology and program expenses that are unavoidable. Small changes for city attorney salary changes. Financial Services Department actually has a net reduction in their funding through some changes that they're making with personnel. Fire Department has some unavoidable costs for some of their technology and resources that they utilize and some programs. Neighborhood Services has a small change for a position allocation change that they made. Sandag costs went up by $32,000, so that is budgeted and non-departmental. And then, the police department has a variety of changes that net out to a small increase for them to continue to provide services and have the technology that they need to do that. And then, lastly, Public Works has a small increase, $60,000 for beach maintenance contract increase, as well as some operating costs increases that are unavoidable, but they are partially offset by funding in the budget. So, the total ongoing costs are $286,000. And so, with that, that would reduce the net surplus next year to just under $300,000. And staff is recommending that the City Council direct us to return with final budget adoption on June 3. We're happy to answer any questions. We have department heads here for specific questions, and I did provide you with written responses to questions that were raised during the council briefings that we did provide. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Navarro, I didn't remember seeing any public on the side. Is there?
We just had two emails, but none wished to be read into the record.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you very much. I think staff did a phenomenal job with the limited information we have on the impacts that are coming to our city with the economic damages of the pandemic, and so I appreciate all the efforts that were made. I know it was difficult, especially with the season that we were coming out of, where everything's moving up, revenues are going up, it's exciting times, and now we're having to kind of stop and backpedal a little. I agree. I think that we're gonna make it through this, and we're gonna have an amazing recovery. But until then, we have to be conservative. And so, some questions that came to mind, actually pretty recently, so I apologize in not emailing ahead of time, in looking at the budget and looking at just the slight surplus we're gonna have, and you know, that's if our estimations are correct. I would like, I mean, I can only speak for myself, but I'd like my colleagues to weigh in on this. We're in a point in time that the city hasn't experienced before, and we have the luxury of, and the blessing of having council aides, which do affect the general fund. And I'm leaning toward the conversation of looking at worst case if council aide positions could be a part-time basis and what would be the savings and/or eliminating them and kind of going with prior discussions of having one council aide that represents all. And so, I just want to have that conversation. When I did the math, it was close to half a million dollars just in council aide salaries and benefits and those sort of dynamics that we could really use as a city to make it through this. And if we make a comeback and the revenues come back up, maybe that's something we can discuss in the future. But I think we really need to have a strong conversation about elimination of council aides temporarily or lowering the hours to help save on revenue. So, again, I can only speak for myself. I know that the mayor is fully functional without a council aide. He's doing great. I have the capacity personally to manage my time and schedule and make this work, and so I would like to know what my colleagues think about that to save our city some revenue.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you. And I think we each had a briefing before, and I've voiced a lot of concerns regarding the uncertainty that we're in and how long it's going to be and whether or not this is solid enough in terms of, you know, the guessing, basically, and what's going to be happening. I would really very much like to make sure that we have an update on the projected revenues before we approve the budget, to see where we are as far into it, or I should say, the least amount of time beforehand, just to, you know, make sure that we're covering everything. I do feel that we're going to be looking at some challenges. Food may be a challenge, continue to be a challenge, although I heard the governor talking about a new program that is very similar to ours. An extension would be to include farmers, local farmers, and I think that would be wonderful. So, I'm hoping that staff is looking at that and seeing how we can grow our food program or at least maintain it and hopefully grow it. I'm not sure where we are in terms of the school district. It looks like we might have schools back in session in possibly July, earlier than the usual August. That's where it looks like the state is heading. But I am concerned about meeting the obligations for our community, the levels of service. We have yet to address, and we're gonna have to put that off, the response times, which basically are having to do more with staffing and infrastructure than anything else. But these are very difficult times for our employees. I don't know how we're doing in terms of people calling in sick and not being able to, you know, I know not everybody has to test positive because they tell people, basically, well, if you have symptoms, you should quarantine for 14 days. Numbers are going up, but so is the testing. Not sure where we're gonna end up there for Oceanside. We did just, we don't get to know all the information for Oceanside. We don't get to know, for example, the number of deaths, but for the news, we wouldn't even have known about the recent death of an Oceanside resident, marine veteran who's 43 years old. So, and I think it was over Easter, Easter weekend. But yeah, these are hard times. I would not be wanting to change anything in terms of the aides. I think that whatever we do, it's always been whatever we're doing with everyone else, and I, for one, need my aide. So, I would be wanting to keep that. And that's it. I'm really more interested in where we're gonna be just before the budget hearing for approval and really dialing down on the details because usually we have more costs when we go from year to year, regardless of whether the levels of service are increased or not. So, I am concerned about that. And now, there are changes in crime rates, you know? I'm hoping that once this is over and kids start going back to school, the domestic violence issues that we've been hearing about will be addressed. I don't know what that means for our department, our departments. But yeah, I'm just very concerned and see how it goes. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Feller.
Thank you. As I said in our meeting, for one time in our long life, we're lucky, we're a bedroom community with 43% of our budget coming from property tax. So, it is an interesting mess we're in, but I would say that, you know, that is a constant for us. You referred to the programs that were Reach and those four programs, and I think you alluded to the fact that they pay, we pay for what they use, but are they, do they have to, are they meeting these groups? I didn't really think about that too much when we were talking. Are the groups meeting? Are they out there, I mean, is there a reason to be even paying for them for the last six weeks?
So, Deputy Mayor, Mayor and Councilmembers, to the extent possible, they are trying to meet with disadvantaged youth, challenged youth on a virtual basis through telephone check-ins and so forth, but there are not group activities happening since clearly that can't happen under the health order. We do have strong contracts in place. Neighborhood Services staff does monitor compliance, and we will only reimburse the costs that can be documented for services that were provided during this time.
I realize that there's a lot of that virtual stuff going on from churches, church services to home fellowships, Bible studies, whatever you, they're all doing those kinds of things. But it's kind of hard to document something like this and show a cost, and especially to the tune of whatever it is, $250,000. So, I would just make sure we're doing that. You said Sandag went up 2,000, so it's a total of 32,000? Or is it, it went up 32,000?
Deputy Mayor, the increase is $32,000. It actually went into effect a year ago, so it affected our current year budget, and it will continue in future years as well. When we questioned them on it at the time, they had indicated they hadn't done an increase in many years, and it was a catch-up, but that is an unavoidable cost for us.
And they didn't tell us, I think.
Right. Action last year happened at the end of June after our budget was prepared and adopted.
Right. You're not supposed to have dead air. Are we on TV? Yeah. I had one minute.
Trying to fill the air. You said no dead air.
Yeah, thank you. You're a peach. So, as far as the, right now, we could pay $21 or $22 million and pay part of our PERS obligation. Is that correct? With the two combined?
That's correct. There's a total of $21 million approximately set aside for PERS obligations. Staff's prior effort has been to save that until we need it to meet budget gaps.
I'm only thinking if we need it. So, I'm interested to hear this about legislative aides because I think I've talked about it once or twice before. And the issue has been, I mean, I know I'm, no matter what, gonna be without an aide at the end of the year, whether I win or whether I'm sitting on my couch at home all the time. I won't have an aide after the beginning of the year. So, I would, I think it is an opportunity to, you know, make good use of the budget. You know, sometimes it's been pretty frustrating to look around upstairs and see nobody there. You know, my, Vicky has been wonderful about being there all the time, but it just seems like a luxury, and I think even Peter uses some of, I know he likes to think he's self-sufficient, but I know he uses some of your staff once in a while. So, I know that there's a need up there for at least somebody to do like they do in Carlsbad. We always like to say we don't want to do what they do in Carlsbad, but this is one of those things that might work. And so, I'd be willing to, at the end of the budget, the 1920 budget, have that change. So, I don't know if that needs to be a motion or, I think, but I think it's something that will be a little cushion, and I think it is fair to all of us that are upstairs.
Councilmember Keim.
I think it's important for everyone to realize who's watching, the amount of work and the amount of thought that was put into this and how we're dealing with this quickly. So, you know, you don't always get to see that during a council meeting or a workshop, but I can tell you, everything's being looked at, and I'm impressed with that. I'm not gonna rehash all the different line items. However, I want to address the council aides. For those of you who've worked with my office and worked with Janine, I'm sure you can understand how valuable they can be, and she's been incredible. But her and I have already discussed this. You know, she brought it up a few weeks ago, that, you know, this could be something we need to look at. So, I have an open mind. It's, I would like to wait till maybe the end of June and see where we're at, but I think that might be an appropriate step. Thank you.
I just have a couple of comments. With the $4.3 million in savings from the vacant, various vacant positions, I'm sure, and then there's going to be vacant, you know, positions across the organization, but I'd like to at least see before we do the final adoption of the budget, what those positions are and then what you would expect the service impacts to be with some little bit of specificity. And the reason I ask that is if we are going to, because of vacant positions, for example, and not that this is happening, but for example, if we have to cut hours at Brook Street Pool, but then we're putting money to open Marshall, I'd rather put the money to keep Brook Street open full-time. So, I'd like to at least see what those anticipated impacts are going to be, particularly, you know, for some of the key issues and key departments that are providing frontline services to the community. And I'm okay if that means the potholes aren't gonna get filled for an extra three weeks, but we should know that so that as issues come in, we understand that even though Kyle may want to go out and fix the pothole that afternoon, if it comes from the council, that the actual answer, it's not gonna happen for a few months, because right now, we don't have very many potholes. He's back there. So, I think if you just put something together as a pass-through to the council, I think I would certainly appreciate that. And then, the only other issue that I have is my position on the aides has been, I think I've said it, I'm fine if we had a staff person working out of the manager's office providing that type of assistance to all of us. That's what they do in several of the other cities, and I'd be supportive of that as well. And with, Councilmember Rodriguez?
Then, I would like to make a formal motion for staff to put what that program feels like together and get us a memo for our review and then potential adoption at the June finalization of the budget. And my motion, I would also like that to show the amount of savings to the city's general fund by that change and obviously the cost, just how that would look like. That's my motion.
Can we have a motion in a second? Please vote.
401. Sanchez, no.
And with that, we'll go to item two, which is the And with that, we'll go to item two, which is the Utilities Non-CIP Budget Overview.
Cary Dale, Water Utilities Director, here to present on the Enterprise Funds, Water, Sewer, as well as Solid Waste Utilities. This year's Utilities Proposed Budget includes the following priorities: mainly maintaining infrastructure, sustainability, implementing a very robust capital improvement plan to develop 50% of local water supplies here in Oceanside, recognizing green and energy-efficient options in the budget, as well as implementing mandates, which is a big part of what we do day-to-day. In the water utility, we assumed that revenues would remain flat and that we would continue to see reduced water usage. We had a reduction in water use in about the five-year historical timeframe, so like 2015 to now, we haven't seen a lot of increases with our water use, and we're assuming those are continuing forward. Council did approve two years of rate increases this past fall. We had implemented the 3% increase for water this past January and had planned in this budget to implement the second rate increase of 3% the following January 2021. We also are very aggressive with our efforts to obtain local, state and federal grants for the utility to offset costs, and there will be a slide in Lindsay's presentation that will detail where we are with that thus far. The revenues for the water utility include an increase of approximately $1 million over the previous fiscal year. Expenditures in the operating fund remain relatively flat, and we have an increase of about $1 million going into the Fixed Asset Replacement Fund, which is the fund that we use to fund our capital projects. In the sewer utility, like water, a two-year rate increase was adopted by council last fall. We had implemented the first of the two years this past January and assumed in the budget that the second rate increase would be implemented come January 1st of 2021. As in the water utility, we're continuing efforts to obtain grant funding, and we are also readying infrastructure, as well as looking at the staffing for the closure of the Los Llanas wastewater treatment plant. The revenues in the sewer utility include an approximate $1.5 million increase over the previous year. The maintenance and operations budget, again, like water, very flat, with any increases in revenues going to fixed asset replacement. In solid waste and recycling, we did have a CPI increase in the waste management contract this past January. That CPI increase typically takes place in July, but was advanced in recognition of the implementation of the organics mandate. We assumed organics rates and charges were factored into the financials, and with the other enterprise funds, we're continuing efforts to obtain grants. The solid waste and recycling revenues reflect about a $4 million increase over the previous year, which reflects the implementation of the rates associated with the organics mandate. On the maintenance and operations expenditures, this also reflects an increase in the operating fund to pay waste management for those organics rates, as well as additional program implementation associated with the organics mandate. In light of what has been happening with COVID-19, I do want to emphasize that the water system, sewer system, and solid waste services provide essential services to the public. During this past month, the governor did sign an executive order which restricted the utility's ability to shut off homes and businesses for non-payment. Although no service charges are being forgiven, they're still accruing. Staff expects that the accounts receivable will increase as a result of the governor's policy. We are projecting that will be, there will be increased write-offs for the upcoming fiscal year associated with delinquent accounts, and that the collection of these revenues will be longer. And I know the Financial Services Department has been working with customers to development, to develop payment plans as needed. The current funding plan that we've provided here today could absorb a small amount of the decreased revenues, and we are monitoring this on a weekly basis. As we, as we approach the budget adoption in June, we should have a better idea of where this is going. With that, staff is recommending that the city council direct staff to return on June 3rd for final budget adoption for water, sewer, and solid waste budgets. And with that, I can either turn it over to Brian, or I can answer questions before we go to the capital improvement program.
Seeing no questions, thank you very much. Then we'll go to item three, which is the city's CIP Budget Overview. Mr. Thomas?
Today is our annual CIP Project Update. So as part of our overview, the city's CIP project is comprised of the city's government and enterprise funds, which includes Transnet, Thoroughfare and Signals, Drainage Districts, RSB-1 Parks, Municipal Harbor Grants, and Water and Sewer Funds for this, this year. The estimated CIP project for the fiscal year is roughly $285.5 million, of which roughly $219 million are from the enterprise fund expenditures for water and sewer. We are not bringing Major X funds forward at this time. This year's budget includes prior-year carryovers for ongoing projects, as well as new allocations from specified source funds. Highlighted carryover projects include the Oceanside Police Department Facility Study, the Annual Slurry Seal and Overlay Program, the El Corazon Aquatic Center, beachfront improvements, as well as other items that will be noted on upcoming slides. Funding sources include grants, taxes, developer impact fees, enterprise funds, and our general fund. Because of COVID-19, we have experienced approximately a 20% reduction in our gas tax and our Sandag funds through Transnet, which have been reflected in our overall budget. Staff will continue to monitor the, these two funds during the fiscal year to make any additional adjustments we need. Our pie chart that we give every year shows our overview. Again, water and sewer comprise approximately $219 million of the requested budget, with the remaining balance of about $66.5 million in general fund and grants. With our Transnet project, we have a number of projects that are annual projects, such as the Slurry Seal and Overlay projects. Our ongoing projects, a few new projects. Two specific projects that have been added to the list this year are the Coast Highway Corridor Design and the El Corazon North Roundabout Construction Project. The Coast Highway Corridor Project comes from the study council approved last year, while the El Corazon Roundabout is a result of negotiations with a developer out at El Corazon to help develop the specific plan as envisioned. One of the other things that we have included at a late date is the Loma Alta Trail Alignment Study to determine whether or not a bicycle lane can be put along Oceanside Boulevard. The amount noted for the Slurry Seal and the Overlay Program is only a portion of what we are bringing forward. The other two funds that would make up the, the balance of our roadway project would be the SB-1 funds, as well as Major X. And this is our grant fund for Transnet for our railroad crossing. Our gas tax, the SB-1. Again, as noted, SB-1 funds are adding approximately $4.6 million to the available street and maintenance repair balance. The ADA Overlay Project is a tandem project to allow staff to address deficiencies at ADA corners as needed, and the storm drain improvements will allow staff to address failing corrugated metal pipe half rounds throughout the city, as well as allow for the city to comply with the state mandated trash capture program to keep trash out of the storm drains. Currently, our Slurry Seal is anticipated to cost about $0.35 per square foot, while our overlay is anticipated to be about $2.25 per square foot. Transnet and SB-1 will provide approximately $2.2 million for approximately 59 lane miles of Slurry Seal, while these same two funds will provide approximately $3 million for approximately 16 lane miles of overlay. Our proposed overlay projects at this point are Rancho Hermosa Senior Community, Industry Way, and Mission Avenue from I-5 to Horn Street. For these projects, staff will be using a full-depth reclamation process, which will actually help improve the longevity of the street. Moving forward to the district and citywide drainage, the San Luis Rey River Clearing Project is an ongoing project through vegetation along parts of the river each year, and the Cleveland Storm Drain Project has grown in scope to take advantage of construction activities to include downtown water and sewer line improvements. Two key issues that still are in the process of being resolved are an agreement with NCTD to allow crossing at Surf Rider for the water, the sewer, and the storm drain, as well as California Coastal Commission coordination and approval for the outfall at the ocean. Currently, in our Parks Project, we have a number of new and existing projects we're moving forward with. Mansby Cannon Field Lighting, the JLRC Park Study, the Pickleball Courts Phase 1, and the Dog Facility Studies are all new projects. And the existing ones would be the Buccaneer Park Facility Study, as well as the Coastal Rail Trail City Match Portion. With our Harbor Project, we have one current project. That's the J-Dock Replacement that's currently in design, and we expect construction to occur this summer. Our future projects for the Harbor Enterprise Fund would be parking lot repairs in both fiscal year '21, '22, and '22, '23, with riprap design for the Y and J Dock following in fiscal year '23, '24. Our community facilities, again, some of our highlight projects are the Fire Training Tower, the Lifeguard Towers, general plan update, and our main library improvements, which is a new project we're requesting this year. Our miscellaneous capital city projects are the El Corazon Aquatic Center, which is currently under construction, our sand replacement project, which is ongoing, our two underground utility projects on Fire Mountain and Oceanside Boulevard, as well as the Arts Commission. We do have several grants that we're working with. We currently have two Federal Highway Administration Grants for the Douglas and Coast Highway Bridge retrofit and replacement projects. We also have a Caltrans Grant for construction of the Race Median of Douglas between North River Road and Villa Sibola. The city was also given a state grant from the specified general fund for the beachfront improvements, thanks to Assembly Member Horvath's efforts. And the city also has a Sandag Grant for the design of the Coastal Rail Trail. There is a city required match of $100,000, which is covered with Parks Funds at this In our Thoroughfare, our Signals and our Thoroughfare and Signals Accounts, we were able to transfer the money that we had allocated for the Melrose Gap Project last year to the College Boulevard Project in this coming year. So we have design completion. We have construction scheduled for this year for College Boulevard. We also have the, the citywide circulation update, and we have three traffic signals. The last one on the slide here, Rancho Del Oro and San Ramon, will be constructed in conjunction with the Senior Community Rancho Hermosa Project. Something new this year, we have general fund requests. We have six new and existing projects. Our current existing project is the El Corazon Sign Project. We do have an assigned fund for it. We do have enough funds in there for the $200,000. This will really, this will leave a remaining reserve balance of $164,000. Projects not included in the general fund are the Tyson Bluff Design. This would replace, and, and this would repair the sidewalk, as well as the safety bollards and chains along the bluff. We also have the street market bollards, which would provide for safety barriers during the, the street markets in lieu of using cars. We have the downtown street lights, which would rehabilitate the street lights that are in deteriorating mode, as well as homogenize the, the color and make it uniform. We also have a Phase 2 for Fire Station Number 4, which would include remodeling of the shower facilities, as well as the bedroom facilities to make it an easier response time. Out of the Assigned Infrastructure Fund, if all four of these projects were funded by council, we would have a total of $1.215 million, which would leave a reserve balance of $5.294 million. Our last general fund request is the municipal pier utility upgrade design in the amount of $3 million. This will allow the city to go out and replace the, the water and electrical utilities on the wooden pier. We currently have close to $5 million in that fund. Allocating $3 million of this would leave about $1.8 million in, in the fund balance. We have a number of unfunded future projects. We provide this each year. We have added a few things this year to it, and that would be on our last slide here. A new police department facility, the Joe Balderrama Park Facility Replacement, McNeil Street Replacement, College Boulevard Bridge, and the Melrose Bridge. So our recommendation to staff, or our recommendation to city council at this point is to direct staff to return on June 3rd for final budget adoption and include all recommendations outlined in the capital project budget. Happy to answer any questions at this time, or we can have Lindsay come up, and we can answer them together.
Well, I believe we have comments specifically to this item.
On item number three, the city clerk's office received five voicemail messages, two from the same person, and 22 emails. The following individuals wish that their comments be read into the record. The first one is from Hannah Smith. Dear Oceanside City Council and staff, I am Hannah Smith, an athlete against synthetic turf and a youth board member of CleanEarthForKids.org. turf and a youth board member of CleanEarthForKids.org. We did a lot of research on synthetic turf. I beg you not to put in synthetic turf. It is very toxic and harmful to our youth, your youth, and even you. Our second comment is from Leanna Marie. Dear Mayor and City Council Members, how much will it be to clean up the environmental mess from artificial turf? Don't put artificial turf for Oceanside. Plastic grass pollutes, creates heat islands, off-gases methane and ethylene, contributes to more red tides and algae blooms, puts more microplastics into our drinking water, our waterways, and oceans, and our food. Our next public comment is from Jane Marshall. Dear Council, please protect our kids, our parks, and our budget from artificial turf installation. It is too expensive, especially with the unforeseen loss of city income due to the pandemic, to install and maintain for a very short useful life. The growing body of known health impacts of kids puts the city at risk. Our next comment is from Amelie Kathleen. Dear City Council, I am writing to express my deep concern about the possible use of synthetic turf in Oceanside. Research shows synthetic turf contains toxic chemicals that can seriously harm people's health, especially children and students who are the ones who would be using the fields. Synthetic turf has many harmful health effects. Our next comment is from Diane Volkey. The city's assessment that heat issues related to synthetic turf do not apply to Oceanside is grossly inaccurate and potentially quite harmful. Turf burns provide ready access for MRSA found on 70% of plastic grass fields in an EPA study. Additionally, COVID-19 can live on plastic for 72 hours after a single exposure. Chemicals, the sin turf industry is promoting for us in killing COVID-19, and MRSA is in violation of EPA guidelines for these products are not found on the EPAN list for use against COVID-19. Our next comment is from Matthew Kler. Dear City Council, I support a bridge crossing the Calavera River from Oak Riparian Park. Please add it to next year's budget. It is much needed. Thank you. Matthew Kler. Our next comment is from Mary Ann Viney. Take the health protective action and call a moratorium on synthetic turf purchase until the comprehensive California Synthetic Turf Study Health Impacts results are provided this summer. Industry studies to date are limited and incomplete, while many independent studies indicate serious health impacts to our children from this inherently unsustainable product. The final comments from Joan Bachman. Please support the El Corazon North Roundabout Construction and Access Road Budget Items. Parks are more precious during the shutdown. People need to have open spaces and the renewal that comes from nearby nature. El Corazon offers something for everyone. This moves our park toward completion. Friends of El Corazon, Joan Bachman, President, FriendsOfElCorazon.org. And that completes the public comment.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas, real quick, I didn't see that staff was proposing funding a synthetic turf field in the 2021 budget?
Not that I'm aware of. I've not seen it in the budget.
Thank you.
But to answer the question about the Oak Riparian Trail that has been brought up, I did have a discussion with Diane Nygaard this afternoon before the budget hearing, and that has been included in it as the Calaveras Creek Crossing Project, so.
Thank you. So we want to do Lindsay at this point, and then we'll go to the council for both.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, City Council, Lindsay Leahy, Principal Water Engineer with the Water Utilities Department. Here to discuss the capital improvements program proposed budget for fiscal year 2021 for the Water Utilities Department. In total, the Water Utilities Department is requesting $219 million for next fiscal year, $32,727,000 coming from the Water Fixed Asset Replacement Fund, $92 million from the Water Connection Fund, $93 million from the Sewer Fixed Asset Replacement Fund, and $757,000 from the Sewer Connection Fund. Of these funds, only $61.2 million are new requests for appropriations for the water, and $12 million are new requests for appropriations for the sewer. Water Utilities Department is working with the Financial Services Department to right-size these budgets and only appropriate what are projected to be spent each fiscal year. The funding sources for the Water Enterprise Fund come from WFIAs loans, which are low-interest loans through the Environmental Protection Agency, state revolving fund loans, which staff has applied for but has not yet been announced as a recipient, revenue bonds, which staff plans to approach council and request issuance in the coming months, grants which have been received, developer fees, as well as user rates, which are comprised of water sales and meter charges. For the sewer fund, we were also awarded a WFIAs loan, which is, again, is the low-interest loan through the Environmental Protection Agency. The remaining of our funds come from developer fees and user rates from sewer usage, as well as fixed charges. This is just a sample of the 31 projects that the Water Department is taking on from the Water and Recycled Water Program. I want to point out that council has given staff in the Water Utilities Department a goal to develop our local sources of water to 50% by the year 2030. We are currently on track to meet that goal. The first three projects on this list, the Pure Water Oceanside, Lower Recycled Water, and Upper Recycled Water projects, directly impact this goal, of which, by the end of Phase 1, which is the completion of those three projects, the Water Utilities Department will have approximately 33% of our water sourced locally. By the end of Phase 2, we will have over 56% of our water sourced locally, and that is on track for 2030. Pure Water Oceanside itself will increase our local supply to 32%, where Recycled Water will increase to 24%. The next phases of projects are mainly rehab and rehabilitation projects. These include downtown water pipeline replacement, which will replace our aged infrastructure and undersized water pipelines. Reservoir structural analysis and rehabilitation will, we've completed the analysis, and we are going through and structurally and seismically rehabilitating our reservoirs throughout the city. Advanced metering infrastructure will replace all of our meters within our water service area with advanced meters, which will have the ability to provide near-real-time water consumption for customers. This will allow customers to more readily realize if there's leaks on their side of the meter, as well as fix those leaks and decrease water loss within the city. Mission Basin Well Expansion and Brine Optimization will add two additional production wells from our groundwater aquifer, increasing the amount of water we can receive and produce from that aquifer. And the brine optimization portion of that project will add a treatment train to the back end of that process, again, to increase the amount of water we get from that production. Fallbrook Recycled Water Assessment is, we received, acquired a pipeline from the Fallbrook Public Utilities Department, and through that, that will be one part of the backbone of our recycled water program. As it's a line that has been in use for some years, we want to complete a condition assessment, as well as do repair replacement of sections of that pipeline as they become identified. Water tenant improvements is improvements of our Jones Road Facility, where our Meter Services Department is located. This includes the addition of a meter test bench, which will allow our crews to internally test and calibrate our water meters. Wies plant improvements include the electrical upgrades of the Wies plant, which is one of our, which is our largest water, drinking water plants, as well as the replacement of the concrete coatings of the tanks and basins within that facility. Water valve and hydrant replacement program will replace the aged water valves and hydrants throughout the city. And as we have ended or come to the end of our capital improvement program list that was identified in our previous 2015 master plan, we want to take on the endeavor of completing and updating our recycled and water master plan for the department. Again, this is just a sample of our 31 projects, and I just listed what was essentially a million dollars or above. We have multiple goals within the department from council, and one of those goals is to seek funding alternatives to offset the costs to our customers. Over the last year, we have been awarded approximately $10.2 million in grants for the projects listed. This does not include the remaining $17 million in pending grant applications that staff has submitted and is waiting to hear back on. Additionally, staff has seeked other alternatives, including low-interest loan applications like WFIAs, state revolving funds, which we've both applied for and were selected for WFIAs and are waiting to hear back from state revolving fund, as well as the Metropolitan Local Resources Program reimbursement, which we received and are selected for and have entered an agreement with. The next goal is to construct the Pure Water Oceanside Project. Again, after this first phase of the project, the Pure Water Oceanside will provide 11% of our local supply to the city. This operational, the operation of this plant is tied to our SB 606 deadline of January 1, 2022. Overall, Pure Water Oceanside Phase 1 includes five separate construction projects, two of which have been awarded to date by council, the first being the Advanced Water Purification Facility, and the second being the first phase of the conveyance pipeline. The remaining three contracts are the second phase of the conveyance pipeline, the groundwater injection wells, as well as the monitoring wells. The next goal is to construct the lower recycled water system, as well as complete the design of the upper recycled water system. In total, the system will include 20 miles of pipeline, two reservoirs, and two pump stations. Both of these projects are essentially the backbone of our recycled water system, and will deliver water from our central water reclamation facility to the south in the Fire Mountain area, as well as to the northeast and to our South Morro Hills area. Lower Recycled Conveyance was awarded last week at council, which will construct the pipeline from our reclamation facility to that Fire Mountain site. Lower reservoir and pump station will, is the construction of the reservoir and pump station at our Fire Mountain tank site, where we currently have a potable water reservoir there. That design is complete. However, it has been applied for state revolving fund loan, so we will not begin construction until the award has been announced and an agreement has been entered, as you cannot begin construction prior to that date. The upper system is at a 30% design. We have also applied for that project with the state revolving fund, and would only begin construction if we've been selected and an agreement's been entered. The final goal for the Water and Recycled Water Program is to improve the reliability of our critical infrastructure. As I mentioned, there is about 31 projects in whole for the department that they're working on, but a snapshot of those are downtown water pipeline replacements, our reservoir structural upgrades and seismic upgrades, as well as our advanced metering infrastructure projects. For our sewer funds, we have approximately 42 projects that staff is either in design, construction, or planning for. This is, again, just a sample of those projects. I took the snapshot of approximately $2 million or above. However, I did want to highlight a new project on that list, which was near that cutoff. The first two are related to the Buccaneer Lift Station in Force Main. Buccaneer Lift Station is being designed and will be constructed to replace the La Salina Wastewater Treatment Plant. This will centralize our, send wastewater flows to our San Luis Rey Reclamation Facility and centralize all of our wastewater flows. Oceanside Boulevard Lift Station is to replace the current lift station, which has reached the end of its useful life. This contract has been awarded and is under construction. Downtown Sewer Pipeline Replacement is similar to the water replacement and will be constructed at the same time. This, again, will be replacing aged sewer infrastructure, as well as undersized pipelines. Pipeline Rehabilitation, this looks at smaller projects that can do point repairs, single pipeline replacements, or single pipe pieces, piece replacements. Our San Luis Rey Maintenance Building Upgrades, this is the construction of a new maintenance storage facility in order for us to more centrally locate all of our storage supplies, as well as our crews that are partially located at COC. The Land Outfall Project is, the Land Outfall is a pipeline that brings all of our treated wastewater from San Luis Rey out to our ocean outfall. We have recently, over the last year, year and a half, completed a condition assessment of that pipeline, and through the results have identified areas in need of repair or replacement. This project would proceed with the design and construction of those repairs. Lift Station Upgrades, we continually upgrade our lift stations throughout the city. There are quite a few. This year, we will look at constructing or taking on five construction projects at five different lift stations to include those upgrades. These could include security and access to pump replacements, electrical upgrades, and other type items. Sewer Pipeline Capacity Upgrades will increase pipelines that are currently, have met their design capacity and are need to be expanded in order to handle additional development and flows that are coming in from new development projects. Sewer Inflow and Infiltration. Inflow and infiltration is essentially any water that gets into our sewer system via our pipelines, groundwater, or stormwater, and so we look to reduce that as much as possible. This specific project will look at lining and replacing pipelines in our harbor and our strand area, where we get a lot of storm or seawater intrusion, which in turn takes a lot of saltwater down to our treatment plants, which is difficult to treat and expensive on our treatment side. The last project on this list is a Mesa Garrison Lift Station, which, in partnership with our Buccaneer Lift Station, will redirect flows to our San Luis Rey Water Reclamation Facility. It's a new lift station for that area to send the flows to the north, rather than where they're currently heading, which is La Salina. There are three other projects that are added to the sewer budget this year, but are not at that approximately $1.8 million line item, but were included in the budget book. The first being a sewer pipeline replacement. These are projects that don't fit the smaller scope and are more longer pipeline replacements, and can go for several hundred feet to approximately a mile of pipeline replacements. There is a Mission Avenue Force Main Rehab and Replacement. The Mission Avenue Force Main is similar to the Land Outfall. It was installed, it's in the same location, it's of the same material, and was installed around the same timeframe. We were not able to do a condition assessment of that pipeline, however, because of the similarities to the Land Outfall, we assume it's in similar condition to that pipeline in that location, and so we want to take on a rehab and replacement of that pipeline. The final project is a North Valley Lift Station relocation. There is a little caveat to this. This is essentially tied to whether or not North River Farms is approved. With the additional capacity or additional sewer flow that would come from that project, it would require our North Valley Lift Station to be relocated and upsized. So I have included $81,000 for next fiscal year to begin a design of that project, should North River Farms get approved in the next election. There are two goals for the Sewer Department with council. The first is to complete the design of Buccaneer Lift Station, which was formally called our La Salina Lift Station, which is located at our La Salina Wastewater Treatment Plant. In November of 2014, council directed staff to decommission the La Salina Wastewater Treatment Plant, rather than taking on an expensive endeavor of bringing that plant up to current code and infrastructure needs. This would centralize all of our wastewater flows to San Luis Rey Water Reclamation Facility for advanced and recycled water treatment. for advanced and recycled water treatment. Currently, the project's at approximately 60% complete. It has been submitted to the Development Services Department for CEQA process, as well as a conditional use permit. The picture on the top shows a conceptual rendering of the architecture of the lift station in that area. This is similar architecture as to what's been requested and approved for the Oceanside Boulevard Lift Station. The bottom picture, the shaded red area shows the approximate footprint of the Buccaneer Lift Station. The reason this location is selected is because of that footprint of the plant, which is outlined in red. This is essentially the only location on that site that does not contain critical wastewater infrastructure to keep that plant operational. This will allow staff to construct the lift station while still keeping the plant operational. Once the lift station is constructed, we can then decommission the wastewater treatment plant. In addition to that, the, all of the wastewater system and the sewer system in that area, all gravity flows to that location. So there, that is why additional or another site off in a different area was not selected, as that would require a lot more capital costs to redirect all the flows in that area. The final goal for the sewer group, the sewer projects is replacing and rehabilitating aged infrastructure. As I mentioned, there's approximately 42 projects that staff is working on, and again, a snippet of those is our downtown sewer pipeline replacement, our pipeline rehabilitation program, as well as our lift station upgrades. With that, staff recommends city council direct staff to return on June 3rd for the final budget adoption with recommendations from council.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you very much. Just one moment, I'm going to gather my thoughts on a couple items. He's charging. My clock's, my clock's, good thing I don't have a PowerPoint. All right, thank you, staff. I know you've worked with each one of us individually and have had to present that, gosh, probably like 12 times now, so thank you for enduring that and putting this together. Again, I think you've done a phenomenal job with the limited information that we've, we have as far as COVID, as far as, you know, the recent flooding. I think there's some variables that we'll have to navigate, pivot, work through as they come forward, but I think we're, we're aiming in the right direction and we'll, we'll take it slowly. Couple questions, and I actually would like to make potentially a few motions, we'll see what happens. I have some questions. I know we really didn't deal with Measure X too much, but obviously Measure X has been impacted by this. Just briefly, what is the game plan on convening the oversight and eliminating, you know, projections? Because if sales tax and those sort of dynamics are going to be decreased, we obviously have to prepare on pulling the plug on something, and I, I know we really didn't address that in the budget workshop. Any brief comments on that, Deanna?
Sure, Councilmember Rodriguez, Mayor and councilmembers. Staff had prepared a spending plan for next fiscal year for Measure X that was presented to the Measure X Oversight Committee back on March 12th, I believe, but that was before COVID really hit. And based on projections we've received from our sales tax consultant, Measure X revenue is approximately 59% of our total sales tax revenue. We will see a decrease for next year, although not as large as the, the total sales tax, because it is 59%. So we are updating our numbers to incorporate those new revenue numbers into the projection, and then we will revisit projects. The intent would be to continue those that were initiated in year one to the extent feasible, but we may look at reprioritizing a few of the capital projects that have been slow to get started, perhaps delaying them a bit and trying to prioritize street improvements to the extent feasible, while trying to be very budget-minded at the same time.
Got it, thank you very much. So from what I remember from Measure X, because the motion I want to make, I, I want to be able to say how we're going to cover the cost of this. We had 100 grand set aside for identifying a police station location, and then we had another 100 grand set aside for a homeless working program that we never got any responses from, I think it was like over 70 nonprofits, and so right there, that's 200 grand. Now, have, have we collected that 200 grand yet from Measure X? I don't know, those are some variables that maybe staff can put together, but, you know, we're, we're 22 years at this temporary police station, and there is a growing, growing pain with our, you know, police department to, to expand the operations and what that looks like, how we're going to pay for it, there's some big question marks in play, but I think it is appropriate. From what I reviewed in 2006 through 2008, there was a 30-year needs assessment that was conducted. I would like to get support from my colleagues today to expand and redo that. I don't know how appropriate that is with the season we're in, but I think we really need to, to expand that. We're now 12 years since that was done, and to kind of do an updated survey and piggyback off of that. So I would like to add that and reallocate the 100,000 homeless work program to the 100 grand for identifying a police station. So now we have 200 from Measure X, and then potentially pull some funds from the assigned infrastructure fund. I don't know, I know we have some reserves left there, but what I'm looking to do is, and what I would like to have a conversation with my colleagues, is have staff put together a twofold plan on, on potentially moving forward on a, on a, you know, new police headquarters. And I, and I think they're currently sitting on real estate, and that real estate has value, and so I think the first part of this equation is, what can we get for the current location? What can the use be? What is its value? What can, what is our liquid assets on that if we were to sell it or do something with it that we can leverage toward a future police station? So that's one piece of it. The other piece of it is, what would a new police station, what, what would it look like? And I know the survey is going to assess that, but, you know, do we have to build from the ground up? Are we able to retrofit in a warehouse building? Are we able to add a second police station headquarters? You know, are we able to, you know, get creative is what I'm saying. One thing I would like the city of Oceanside to be smart on and move forward on being the third largest city in the counties, I would really like to build a police station and/or retrofit a police station and add on some, some jail cells, and that, that would be an opportunity there that I think we would want to look into as a city revenue source. There's a lot that goes into that, but that's something I would like to look at. So in a nutshell, I would like to look at reallocating the 100 grand added on there, and then potentially adding, you know, another half a million from the infrastructure fund, so we'll have about 700,000 to move on the updated assessment, and staff really looking at what we could do with their current location and identifying a new location. That's the first piece of, how long do I have left of what I wanted to discuss?
Almost four.
Four minutes left? Okay, good. And then I want to drop some, some bombs on everyone here, on some ideas through this workshop, that I really think we need to, to really have a head start and think ahead. We're decommissioning the La Salina location. We're at least one, two, maybe three years out on the full evolution of that, but that's going to be city-owned prime real estate. We have had local constituents come in and say, hey, don't do this with it, do this with it. I, I think we can find a happy balance, but I would like to give direction to staff to, on, on that location, as well as the, the amphitheater and Junior Sayao location that is falling apart. I would like to cast a very large net with a six-month window, an RFP that we can, you know, we can see what somebody brings to us and says, hey, what do you want to do at this site? What's the best you can do and what's the most we can get out of this for the city to expand the park, to have some housing, to have affordable housing, you name it? What can you do with this site? Bring us an RFP, and we'll think about it. I think we should do that for La Salina. I think that Oceanside has an amazing pier that needs to be retrofitted, that we do not have the money for. And I think from the Measure X conversations, that was the item that would fall off if we're short on funds. So, so our pier, which is extremely valuable to our city, is just sitting dangling in the wind with no money, and I think we need to cast a large net on the amphitheater, the Junior Sayao Community Center, and combine the construction that we need done on the pier, all into an RFP, because I think there's a lot of international developers that would really like to make that amphitheater in downtown area gorgeous, and it would produce a lot of value for our residents, and it would fund the retrofit for our pier. So those are the bombs I want to drop. I'll plant the seed and see if they grow, but I really think we need a head start on some RFPs and getting a police station moving forward. Thank you.
To my understanding, that there's an item coming to the council in regards to the OPD headquarters?
So Mayor and councilmembers, Brian can give the current status of the OPD study, but it would be looking back at the study that was done previously, refreshing the needs to identify if those needs are still current, looking at what would be necessary to fully satisfy the needs of the police department into the future. And I know that Brian and his staff developed an RFP in consultation with the police department, and it's about ready to go out. I don't know if you have anything to add?
Yes, thank you, Deanna. Honorable Mayor, councilmembers. With respect to the RFP going out, we're in the final stages of tidying it up. There's just a few things we're working with PD on at this point, as far as current staff and projected staff, but the ideas do cover what you're asking for, Councilmember Rodriguez. We're looking at El Corazon, obviously, as one of the areas. We're looking at repurposing the existing facility. We're looking at, just as you said, can we use some of the buildings that are vacant right now? Can we branch out and do these things? So our goal is to get the RFP out hopefully next week, and then bring a design award contract back to this body first part of August.
So at that time, whatever money we have avail, you would identify what shortfalls if we needed more money, and we can appropriate money at that time?
Yes, sir.
And that would be the first meeting in August?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Feller?
Do I start with full 10 minutes, or do you?
You're down to six.
Okay. Brian, the 17 million that you mentioned pending, who, who mentioned 17 million pending grants? That was, I'm sorry. I've heard so much, I, I need an, almost need a nap here. So for, is that for existing or new actual projects, or is, is it go with that list that was there?
Deputy Mayor Feller, honorable mayor, city council, the 17 million that we have applied for are for existing projects, mainly pure water, oceanside, recycled water, lower, as well as we, as an additional advanced metering infrastructure grant.
Okay, and I, I know, I've been to the station out in Bonzal. Slipped my mind. Tell me what it is. Yeah, up on the hill. The what? The train station? Anyway, so in, in, in the terms for sewage, you use lift stations, and what is the term in water?
So for sewer, we use the term lift station. For water, we use the word pump station.
And so lift station means it must be heavier?
So...
So what is conveyance?
Conveyance is essentially the, the pipeline, which is used to transmit the water from one location to another location. So for the recycled water conveyance and pure water conveyance, it's the pipeline to move the water from the treatment facility throughout the, throughout the city to the end users.
So I, I was told when I was at WIS, the plant, it, it's, that's all gravity going through there. And how much of the city of Oceanside's gravity? Because we are downhill from that station as well.
Deputy Mayor Feller, I, I don't know off the top of my head the percentage of, of the services that are provided in gravity, however, how the, we try to utilize gravity as much as possible. That's why most water treatment plants are as high of an elevation as possible in order to keep the pipelines pressurized. What we will do, and where a pump station comes into play, is the pump station is used to, again, increase that pressure of that water that's in that pipeline. Sometimes it's used to fill reservoirs, so you'll see our reservoirs are usually at the top of the hill. Again, that's utilize, attempting to utilize gravity to keep those pipelines pressurized in order to lower the energy costs in, in conveying that water to the end user.
Okay, I, I was not clear how a pump station fit in this, and, and I thought conveyance had something to do with it. And I too had the same question about turf, because I have something here from Megan that said we will, we'd be discussing this on some, some, one of these papers here, says we were going to be discussing this on the, the April 29th meeting. And, and, you know, I, I, I didn't understand why we didn't have it on the agenda here. May I?
Councilmember Feller and City Council Megan Crooks with Neighborhood Services. The memo that came out to City Council was because we had to begin responding to COVID, we were not able to hold the regular session meeting with City Council on March 25th, because we knew we had a very large public interest in the item, and they wouldn't have been able to attend the meeting. So I conducted a pass-through memo to City Council explaining what had been relayed to the Parks and Recreation Commission at its Jan, or, an earlier meeting, and that we were recommending in the capital improvement project to have lights installed at Mans Buchanan Park to increase our field usage, and that if the council had interest in the artificial turf item, that staff would be available today for any questions.
Okay, I, I was, I am curious about it, because I, I think unfairly, a lot of people will show up for that ultimately when we hear it, and there are many, many people that are on the other side of the people that did speak, so I'm, I'm actually glad we're not hearing it today, but I did, I thank you for that. And Brian, I think for the overlay, you talked about for the overlay section of that, and you, you said something about the way that we're going to treat the streets, and what was the word you were using?
It's full-depth reclamation, Deputy Mayor Feller. It's a process that basically grinds the, the existing street surface and the subbase into a homogeneous mixture. Then we come in, we compact it, then we pay, peel off what we need to, so we can get our appropriate structural section, and then come in and place asphalt. We're doing this because with the stormwater requirements that we have in place with green streets and things like that, it becomes much more difficult to come in and just do an overlay project, because once we hit 5,000 square feet of removal under conventional removal and replacement process, we now have to start looking at how are we going to capture and deal with stormwater, how we're going to treat it before it's released. But in, in number of discussions with the regional board, they've allowed this full-depth reclamation process to go forward without having to do all of the, the stormwater maintenance, and they've deemed it to be a maintenance issue instead of a priority development project.
So my bottom line is probably the flooding on industry that will, if we don't correct the flooding out of Loma Alta ditch, it will be, I, I mean, I'm, I'm assuming the pavement gets pretty torn up. pretty torn up pretty fast when it's underwater, so.
Absolutely. Water is, asphalt's worst enemy.
And the last thing I had was the streetlights that you want to make blue?
The downtown, yes, sir.
Is that all the boxes that go with the signals and like over on Seagate are brown or whatever color that is? And the utility boxes are brown as well?
I'm going to refer that to Kyle, our Public Works Director on that.
I knew we could get him up here sooner or later.
Honorable Mayor, council members, Kyle Coger, Public Works Director. Deputy Mayor Feller, that's just to include the streetlights. It's not any traffic signals, it's just to homogenize the streetlights downtown.
Won't that look a little odd?
We're on, we have a phasing approach to change everything. It's just a lack of having the funding right now, but we'd like to change it all to make it the same eventually.
Okay. Well, I appreciate it. Those are my questions. I think I'm astounded when I hear presentations, as I said, even on the phone call, you know, to listen to what you all do. I'm very appreciative of our staff.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. And yeah, I asked a lot of my questions during the phone call, the briefings that we each had and I had mine, of course. Police station, I already knew that that was coming forward, so I don't think I have any questions for you if you don't want to, if you don't want to, okay. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. I already knew that was coming forward and I know that that is a very complicated issue because, and especially going forward now, since we may end up having a more difficult time in terms of bonding going forward with credit issues and also depending on the cost, we would not have the funding for, within Measure X, that I would think of in terms of a police station, that is what we had talked about previously. So we would be looking to go out for another bond and that would be up to the public. But that, the police station, if it were to be on-site, which would, expanding on-site, which is, would probably cost the least amount, we would have to do a relocation of Mission Branch Library, so that's another cost. We'd have to find another place for the library and I know that that is a high demand for that location, the La Salina Treatment Plant. There are a lot of, I believe there are some constraints there too with respect to the Coastal Commission and wanting to do a very, very public process and what kinds of projects could go there. So, and I think we've been talking about this for a while. This is not the first time that we, that the La Salina Treatment Plant is being brought up. But I do want to spend a little more time on the amphitheater, the Junior Seao Amphitheater and Beach Community Center, which I guess we all know is public parkland. So that means that we cannot sell it. We cannot use it for anything other than what it was deeded for to the city and that is for the public. So we cannot sell it. We cannot, we'd have to put it on the ballot to sell it and so we, we're not going to be able to use that to try to pay for the pier improvements. We're going to have to come up with a different way of doing that, but I for one am not prepared and I don't believe the public would stand losing the amphitheater as a public property that is open to the public. It is one of the unique things that we have in Oceanside is that we do have a few recreational facilities right on the beach and especially the Beach Community Center. That is an iconic, the Junior Seao name was attached to it a few years ago and it is really, really very much used by the public. So using that as leverage to try to raise money is, I don't think that that is something that we can do.
Point of order, I never mentioned anything about selling or preventing the public from accessing downtown. Thank you.
There are other ways that we can raise money, I think, but as to in any way partnering with the private sector, there's just no way that can be done. It is public parkland and public parkland, if you do anything with respect to private partnership, you'd have to put it on the ballot. So, and I would be very, very opposed to that. This is something, these are, as I said, assets, public assets that were deeded to the city many years ago, many, many years ago, the two families, including the Marone family. And this is something that is very, very critical for us and for our community. And back to the budget here, I'm a little quiet today because I'm very concerned about what the bottom line really is going to be. That's another month, so that gives me a lot of pause. This feels almost too early at this point because we don't know. I usually get a much deeper briefing, so this is the first time that I'm having such a, you know, kind of shallow briefing and I'm not feeling really comfortable about where we're heading. So to try to suggest different projects at this time, I think is, basically would be irresponsible because we don't know. We don't know. I'm actually wondering how much public will there will be to have increases to our utilities. You know, we're going to have to wait and see. This is, this is a time that we have to work together with the public and together we will come out stronger with our, with our economic development partners, with the community because in fact it is, it is the community that will decide a lot of things this November, for example. So I am, I think that we need to be very cautious and, you know, hope for the best and hope that we can continue to do well here in Oceanside with respect to the county. You know, we're on the other ed, end of where it's really, where the worst part of COVID-19 is taking place in the South Bay area. I got some communications from elected officials saying, please hold, please hold the line. We all need to work together to get through this together. And for North County to be planning something else other than together with the county and other cities doesn't feel right to me. It feels like, you know, we all need to sit at the table and get through this. It might be that we may end up having less trouble getting back into our, reopening our economy than say other cities, but there's a lot of, there are a lot of battles going on in the South Bay that, you know, I feel are very serious. Losing that many people and having that many people in the hospital and in the ICUs, it may, we may not be Los Angeles County, but it's just up the street here. We're definitely not New York City, but these are very, very serious issues. So I'll just take the time now to thank the community for doing what has been asked of all of us, to stay home if we can. And for those people who work for essential services, transit, healthcare, police, fire, grocery workers, I mean, they're putting their lives on the line for all of us. And again, I know we're not in New York City, but people are, people's lives are being impacted. So I want to thank you for taking this so seriously, for, you know, starting Friday, it's mandatory, I don't know what the fine is going to be, but you're going to have, we're all going to have to cover our mouths if we're within six feet of another person. So I'm really, really hoping for the best and hoping that we can all be on the same page on this because that is the only way that we're going to get through and have a better, a better budget. Because if there is, if people start talking about not wanting to do certain things, not wanting to fund certain things, it's going to be more difficult. It's going to be more difficult. So anyway, those are my thoughts. I know this is a rollover, but even that, I feel, is something I'm not feeling very solid about. I guess another month we'll know better. Thank you.
Councilmember Keim?
I'm going to be blunt and address the motions. I have a hard no on all of them. We have been working towards a police station. We have been planning for it. We're going to pension obligation bonds. We can get this done, but it's going to be seven, eight, nine years. We just have to start planning for it now. I know staff has been working on that, so I think that's enough on that topic. As far as Buccaneer and La Salina and the amphitheater, to try to rush through an RFP for these two extremely valuable and important to the community projects and properties when the public can't even get into the council chambers because of COVID seems inappropriate. I think that we need to, you know, we need to, something like the Buccaneer project, you know, is the time where we can slow down so we can get more public input when they can participate again. So not to beleaguer the point, but I'm not going to support those motions.
And I would just like to say that I'm comfortable with doing an RFP for the La Salina property, but I would like to see that come back when we take the first action because right now I think it's not, I mean, the timeline to actually start what we're starting and moving forward, I think we get, is too far out there, but when we bring the first item for La Salina to go into construction, I think we need to be prepared at that point in time to release an RFP. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yeah, I just would like to further say that as we, as we move forward, we have to be smart and we have to think ahead and community involvement is top priority and the community has spoken multiple times right here while we sat on the dais and as elected officials, I have a responsibility to bring forth ideas that all go through the public process. And so an RFP, ideas, public process, public process, public process, period. So I would like to make a motion to have staff begin the framework of what an RFP in public process would look like for La Salina so that we can be ahead of the game instead of figuring out what we would like to do as a city with public process two, three years from now. I think we need to be strategic, we need to be smart and not be a city that reacts, but a city that responds to opportunities. Thank you.
Ms. Larson, is that something that the staff could put a memo together to the council on that would outline what the steps would be in the timeline?
Mayor, certainly we can put together a memo with that kind of information.
I would like to see that. I don't know that we need to have a motion, but I'd like to see that information come back to us so that we have an opportunity to look at it and at the right time actually direct an RFP to be done. With that, we'll go to item four, which is the 2021 Harbor Budget Overview.
Honorable Mayor, Council, I'm going to run through the harbor operating and capital improvement projects for next year really quick for you. So our revenue, the majority of our revenue comes from slip rentals, harbor facility leases and parking. We have about twenty tenants in the harbor. We have about 950 slip rents. We also get some fees from waitlist, waitlist and transfers and some management fees as well as RV dump fees. We get minor revenue from inspections, investment income, and that total is roughly 8.6 million projected for next fiscal year. And looking at the expenditure side, the majority is in the maintenance staff and all the supplies and materials, the police, security and the admin staff. The Tideland lease, that's the lease that the harbor pays to the city every year. We have lifeguards, property management fees, some depreciation of assets, debt service on some boats and bonds, and that comes up to the same number of 8.6 million. Typically, our expenditures are well below our revenues and the money that's saved is what goes towards our fund reserve and that's what we use to do our capital improvement projects. The city engineer already went over this. The only thing I will add is the JDOC replacement, we're now in the design and permitting stage and we hope to start next year on the construction. And with that, staff recommends that the city council, direct staff to return on June 3rd for final budget adoption, include all recommendations outlined in the proposed harbor operating and capital improvement projects budget for fiscal year 2021. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Navarro, do we have any public on this one?
No public on this item.
Seeing no questions or issues. Thank you, Mr. Coger. Do we have any off-agenda items on item five?
On item number five, the city clerk's office received one voicemail and five emails. The following individuals wanted their comments read into the record. Our first comments from Jan, no last name given. Dear City Council, please do not consider opening parks, beaches and trails at this time. It is not safe. People will put at unnecessary risk and our cases of coronavirus will increase. Dr. Garfine from UCSD has joined Congressman Mike Levin at his weekly town halls on Facebook and has been very adamant, we need to continue staying at home until the medical experts believe it is safe for the public to gather again. Our next public comment off the agenda is from Ray and Elizabeth O'Toole. We are writing to express our strong support of the governor's California roadmap to modify the stay-at-home orders. We support our frontline workers and first responders and do not want to stress or endanger them unnecessarily. We are not in support of the few who want to ignore the coronavirus pandemic so they can walk on the beach and otherwise mingle unnecessarily. Our next comment is from Nancy Gavert. I am writing to express my strong support of the California governor's California roadmap to modify the stay-at-home orders. I support our frontline workers and first responders. I don't want to stress or endanger them unnecessarily. I am not in support of the very few who want to ignore the coronavirus pandemic and have public spaces open to the public. And our final comment is from Nadine Scott. The budget for 2020, 2021 is acceptable. Staff did a good job with what info they had. The five-year forecast is not acceptable. Most of the assumptions are stale and unreliable. That report was done in January 2020 prior to the pandemic and its effect. Urge staff to redo the forecasts. Nadine Scott. And that concludes the public comment.
Thank you. And with that, we will adjourn to 3:30 on Wednesday, May 6th.